All right, so let's. We'll wait for Bill to join, but let's call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen meeting on April 20th at 5:03. We can roll call into the meeting. So Mike, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Is Ed on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, is that a yes, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. And are we waiting? Roy's on. Okay, there's Roy. Good. Um, how you doing, Roy? I'm Mike.
Hi, Mike. How are you?
Good. Nice to meet you. So yeah, Kathy, if you want to jump in, because I know you were gonna leave early, so go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so my questions are more for Roy. I was looking at just a few things. I understand the upside down nature of recycling right now. I get that. And the bar charts, I think, were particularly useful for that purpose, right? But what is, I was looking through your definitions in the contract, trying to find out. I thought the term was a single stream or something. Do I have the right wording?
You do.
There's blended and single, I think.
Yeah, yeah, single stream, single stream is the way we collect it, which means all the commodities go into one barrel, right? And the value is the composition that makes up your single stream. So when it goes through the MRF, we have such, out of that one, say, one ton of material, we might get, you know, forty percent cardboard, twenty percent plastic, ten percent, five percent aluminum, and that makes up your whole hundred percent of your composition. That's called, that's the blended value. It's the blended of your total composition of the, of one ton of material.
Okay, and so I thought like our past five year contract, we have like a collection cost, which I assume is a fixed cost, right? Okay, and then there was the per ton cost, which actually didn't go, the per ton cost didn't go up by a tremendous amount over the five years.
Correct. That's the MSW, the trap.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Just like, just like the collection cost, we have fixed costs with our disposal sites. Those things we can control. It's the market on the recycling that we have really no control over. Every month it goes up.
Yeah, I have a younger brother who's in the commercial side of what you do. So yeah, I hear about it all the time. Trash talk. So my question is, um, like when we, we obviously, the amount that we paid every year was not what we appropriated at town meeting. That's my guess, right?
Okay.
It was the truing up during the year. Is that, is that what, is that correct?
Yeah, why? I'm sorry.
So, so because we're such a small town, we vote a budget like one time a year. We go to town meeting, we set everybody's budget. So we would have set us out a certain amount for trash. And I'm assuming that it was based on probably some kind of an estimate of what you, where you thought it would fall, but each, is it each month you true up and you bill us?
Right. Each month on the recycling, we true up. The other variance which I can talk about too is due to COVID, we've seen a lot of trash volumes and recycling volumes increase, right? A lot of people are working from home, working remotely, kids are doing schools from home, classes from home. So your tonnage is up as well. So that's something, you know, you couldn't forecast, you know, coming into the COVID year that that was going to come up. So you, you had about an, almost a nine to ten percent increase in volume, just from, from over 2019 to 2020, primarily due to.
Right. And I mean, obviously, we're not going to stay locked down forever, but um, I guess my question is, could you give us what the true annual cost was like for the past five years of this contract? What did we actually pay you each year?
I, I had, there was a sheet I sent out to show you what the price on the recycling, what you guys actually paid per ton. But I hadn't cross preference that per how many times you do. I sent you a report for the, the times you did them. I would just put that on the Excel and send in multiple.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, I have that Excel sheet. So you're saying that that, um, let me just look at that again. That Excel sheet, that if I take that and I can multiply and I can add that to the collection cost, and that should be the actual cost?
Well, it, let me see what you're looking at. This.
Let me just see. I'm just taking a, so you gave us a collection. And now you gave us like, you gave us like monthly totals of stuff. I guess what I'm looking for, and I mean, I can get it from between our, our Board of Health and our accountant. We can certainly find it. I just thought you kept records of this because it said that you did in the contract.
Yeah, I could tell you what you were billed each month, that you're saying like.
Yeah, so that we know how much we actually paid the past three years or so per year.
All right, so I, yeah, I can do the, the collection cost, I can give you that, I can give you.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Per month, and I can tell you what you pay for your recycling each month.
Right, and then that would give us a true, a truer annual cost the past three years, because the recycling thing, was it like three or four years ago when the China's recycling thing happened?
Yeah, that was in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, I think it was. Yeah, January eighteen, yeah.
But and then the other piece of information that I was looking at, which surprised me, was the number of large dumpsters we have at different municipal sites in town. Okay. So I'm, I'm assuming that you provided those dumpsters to them like at the beginning of the contract, or did we? Okay, so, yeah, so if we wanted to have different places that are separate from the town pay their own cost, they would be able to pay you or pay us or whatever, because I'm just surprised at how many dumpsters we have around town. It was, it was a big eye opener. We were paying for one at the light department, we're paying for two at the River Pines Federal Housing Authority. We're paying for, we're paying for one up at VZ, we're paying for one at the ballpark, plus one at the South Fire Station, where it's only an on-call place, so nobody's there all the time. There shouldn't need to be a dumpster there, I would think. We're paying for one at the town hall and the public safety building and the Pines Recreation Area. So to me, it's like, and then one at the municipal highway site, which that one makes sense to me, that maybe all of our departments should, should be putting their trash there, because my guess is that people are just dumping stuff in these dumpsters all over town. That's my guess, and then that's also going to continue to cost us a lot of money as we go forward. So if we can consolidate that aspect of the contract, we can expect some kind of savings from that, I would think.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a big one. I mean, because I know in your, in your eyes, it's a lot of containers, but as far as municipality, it's really not. So in the big scheme, a lot of municipalities provide, you know, the, all their schools are part of it, fire departments, police department, libraries, municipal buildings, CPW. So it's not, it's not uncommon to have that, so.
Well, except that we, in our particular case, this trash contract is voted on a town meeting and paid by the taxpayers.
Right.
And your electric municipal is a separate enterprise from the tax.
Yeah, I'll do it.
And I'm not even sure the Federal Housing Authority, if they're not continually kind of separate from us as well. They're run by a separately elected board as well. So, yeah, so I just thought we, you know, it probably came about, you know, because we've always done it that way.
Yeah.
Now that we're getting bigger, my question is, what about Nichols Village? They weren't listed as a particular pickup site. Do you do the trash for Nichols Village?
Doesn't sound, doesn't sound familiar, so I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, I would like to know if, if, how, what, what's going on at Nichols Village, because that would kind of answer my question about these other somewhat separate entities. If, if you're picking up at Nichols Village and you have a second, separate relationship or agreement with them, because.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like it's part of the contract off the top of my head, but I will look into it.
Right, so it's an over sixty-five across from the high school, but in Grovelands. It's a pretty big residential site, so I would think. What about Whitestone Village? Do you know if you pick up there?
I don't believe we don't. I don't think we have any like, is it like a condo?
Yes, that's an over fifty-five condo.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay, so that tells me then that we're treating some of our things one way and now there's another way. That's what I was wondering. Okay, so that, that's, I think that's, I think that's all my questions for now. I just, I need some time to look over like the annual costs and, and see what we were actually paying as opposed to what you're proposing.
Okay.
You know.
So do you want, do you want it based on fiscal years?
Um, that would be ideal. Thank you. That would be perfect, because that's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right. I'll go back and I'll get you the last two fiscal years.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So twenty and twenty-one, I'll get you.
Right, and then you're gonna look into, just to make sure, I think you said you don't think you did Whitestone, but just make sure on the Nichols Village, that would be an important one.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll pull a list of the, the sites that we get that we are servicing on the contract, and I'll let you, I'll, I'll send them all to you.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
And you can decide which ones you want to keep, continue on with.
Learning as we go, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I know if you, you know, recall back when we did this last time, and you, your current vendor kind of pulled out really quickly. So we only got like a couple of weeks turnaround from the time that we responded to.
I do remember that, yeah.
Oh, no, it was bad. I, I wasn't on board. I was trying to put my trash out, I think.
Yeah, so because the bid went out, what, August fifteenth, we responded by the twenty-second. We were gonna start on October first, and then they pulled out and they asked us to start on September first. So we really, the time we bid it, we had like less than two weeks to do and make it happen. So that's not, that's not common. Usually have like a year to nine months or something like that, but, but that's, that's why some of these things, you know, may have slipped by and just happened so quickly.
No, I'm sure. I mean, I'm, I'm new to the board, so I'm just learning this as I go. So, and, and do you know, do we have a firm limit on the barrels that people can put out? Or is it kind of like, as long as it's in a barrel?
You guys have, you have a four barrel limit right now.
Oh, four, wow.
Is that a hundred and thirty-five gallons? Is that?
Yeah, thirty-five gallons, yeah.
Right, but what's the max per household? Is it one forty?
Four thirty-fives. And if a driver sees it, so I mean, they're not gonna sit there and measure a barrel from a thirty-five. But you, we know the difference between a thirty-five and a, you know, a sixty-four, you know what I mean?
Right, because I'm wondering, in, I don't know how easy this is, but I'm wondering what the cost difference would be if you're, if you're reducing it from four thirty-fives to three thirty-fives. And what that actually looks like.
Yeah, I, I ran a cost, I ran a cost savings for you just based on two, two barrels. And the reason I was able to do two, because we have a lot of communities that do too. I have no one that I could really look at for data for a three to see what, how much it would come down. I would, here's my, my advice. If you're gonna make the change, I'd go from four to two.
Two, yeah.
Yeah, making a three, going to three is really, it's gonna be minimal, and you'll be looking at it years from now and say, now let's go to two. Just do it and do it at once. You can, there's other programs where, you know, because they're gonna be filming these out there that say, I can't get by with, with two, right? But if it's, we have a, a solution for them, which is those page, you know, overflow bags.
Right.
Program available, which I've gathered a lot of information that I can share with you guys too, that you could,
Okay.
You know, that way, these people who do need extra, they can go out and buy the bags. And they, extra. The people who don't, don't need to be, you know,
Subsidizing.
The burden of the taxpayers for the, right, so.
What does your typical thirty-five gallon barrel look like, though? Is it the, the, I don't know, I'm colorblind. Is it the green ones with the green lid and the black handles, or is it the bigger ones?
Uh, we don't really have very, you mean, our own barrels were very.
Whatever a standard household would be. So like for my household, we have six people here. But we have the bigger blue, I guess they're technically recycling barrels, but we never fill those each. So my in-laws live behind me. They have one, and then my four in this unit use one of them, but they're only about half full typically.
Okay, yeah.
Is that something that would be like thirty-five gallons per barrel?
Yeah, I mean, some of them are sixty-four. Those are the standard, thirty-five, sixty-four, and ninety-six are the three most popular sizes.
Okay.
So without me seeing it, it'd be hard for me to tell you what size it is, but if I saw it, I would know, you know.
I'm gonna go take a picture of it, because I'm wondering exactly what that kind of looks like. Well, I'm wondering if this is a bigger barrel and using half of it is the same size you're talking about, or is, is filling one of these different than filling your other barrels, so?
Yeah, so we should, you know, get a look.
I'm. You ask your questions, I'm gonna go take a picture.
I thought we were at like two barrels already, so I had no idea we could put out four. I've been missing out. But I think he takes a picture, he'll answer my question, because we have like the big green monster you can buy at Home Depot with the wheels and the handle. I have no idea what size it is.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have, all have wheels. Like I get the thirty-five, sixty-four, ninety-sixes, they'll all have wheels, but and they'll have, they'll have lids.
Yes, so but if we go to two barrels, how do you, how do you deal with like this thirty-five, sixty-four? Or are you thinking, nobody's buying the sixty-four? It's that big a barrel?
Well, it has to somewhat be standardized, so we, you know, if somebody's got a sixty-four, then he can fill up that one, or he can halfway fill two of them, you know what I mean?
Okay, I get it. Okay, okay.
And it's, and it's really gonna be discretionary, because there's no way the drivers can measure, but there's a, you'll know if they've got four barrels with the trash, and they're not gonna, you know, there's gonna be an eyeball. And what they'll do is they'll, they'll tag it, say, going forward, you will take this, but for now, we're gonna, you know, reject anything above and beyond that, unless it's an.
Right, right. And so people who are running like a business, like a daycare, they can buy the overflow bags, right? Because they're.
Yeah, that looks like a thirty-five.
All right, so.
Thirty-five, or thirty-five or forty, yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah, that's not that big. Mine's bigger than that.
Yeah, so we don't use, we don't fill two of these between six of us.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if the standard person uses that kind of barrel, besides Kathy, she says she uses the bigger barrel. But if we're not filling that and we can go from four to two barrels, I would, I would think that that would be significant savings for the town.
Right.
Yes.
And people who are using way more trash or way more resources, that would, that would need that extra to then get those bags or those overflows or things, and.
Right.
Burden that part on them and not have to burden myself or somebody else that's not using that much.
Right, so there's two options, right? The, people aren't gonna generate like, whatever, they're gonna still generate the amount, the same amount as they are today. Is they recycle more, or if they're already recycling as much as they can, then they're gonna be, be forced to go out and buy the overflow bag. They're not gonna produce anything less, so they're either gonna, it's gonna force people to recycle more, or they're gonna go and buy the overflow bag. Either way, the town's gonna save, right? The cost per ton of your recycling is like, today is forty-six dollars a ton versus going into, you know, it's gonna be eighty-two dollars a ton for trash.
What about the collection cost, Roy?
With the collection cost, it doesn't matter to me, because it's, it's a co-collecting truck, so it's going down the street and it's gonna, the driver throws it on one side of the truck or he throws it on the other, doesn't matter.
So it's ton, it's tonnage alone?
It's tonnage alone, yeah, yeah. So on the overflow bags, I mean, what you would do, I mean, I can go into that if you guys want to hear more about that, or do you want to decide if you want to go to that barrel limit, then we can have that discussion later on, but.
I think, I think we understand what overflow bags are, you know.
Okay.
Basically, you have to go and buy a roll of extra bags for excess over two or four barrels.
Right, yeah. They'll sell them sleeves of five or ten, right? We generally try to say that with the five, so they buy, buy three sleeve of five for fifteen dollars, three dollars a bag. Your cost, I figured, and an average would be about a dollar twenty-six, count disposal and the cost of the bag. So the town makes money, you know, another, or whatever the remainder is, you know, off the.
Okay.
Dollar eighty or something.
Yeah, yeah, so you'd make, you'd make money. It's, it'd be a, you know, cash flow for you.
Yeah, all right. Um, Bill, you want to know, you had some questions you wanted to ask? Maybe he's not on.
I don't see him.
Bill is there. He's just muted.
Bill, you gotta unmute yourself. I'm gonna give you three seconds to move on to somebody else and come back. All right, Jason, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I really like the idea of the overflow bags, because it really make it more fair for everybody that's getting rid of the trash, especially households that really need a little extra help getting rid of a lot of trash.
Yeah, yeah, I think it will equalize the cost across more people than just.
And if it brings a little bit more awareness to how much trash are you getting rid of now that you pay for it right out of your pocket? Maybe you're a little more conservative in how much you waste.
Right, exactly. Right, and if someone's having a party or something, they just go out and buy a couple of extra bags, right? You know, eventually they're home, they just buy the bags, so.
All right, I'm unmuted. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. Um, I'll be honest with you. I've got a big family, and I seldom put out more than one thirty-five gallon barrel. So two ought to be sufficient for everyone, and for those that are not sufficient, they ought to pay the cost, not pass on that, not have everybody in the town subsidize their extra trash collection.
Yeah.
I, I don't get it.
Yeah, I'm on board. I actually had the drive, the driver and the route manager give me kind of a, they obviously couldn't count the homes, but he said about sixty percent of the homes have four barrels.
Really?
Yeah.
So that's, that's. That's gotta end.
That's gotta end. It's, I mean, you're right. I, I manage a lot of contracts, and that's four is the most of, in any town that I manage. Most of them have one sixty-four, which is equivalent to, you know, two thirty-fives, so.
Yeah, we try to recycle everything we can and have one barrel at the end of the day. And like I said, I've got four kids, three grandkids, significant others, spouses, friends, and we seldom generate more than one thirty-five gallon barrel of trash. We probably have two to three containers of recycled, but seldom, even, even if we have a party, which we haven't had in two years because of COVID, we seldom generate more than two.
Right.
If it helps, uh, Easton where I live has waste management, single collection contract. We're a town of about twenty-five thousand, and we have one sixty-five gallon barrel for trash and one, I think it's on eighty, eighty-five, ninety.
Yeah, you guys have a ninety-six, yeah, yeah.
For recyclables, and that's all we got. And nobody has the option for two, but we do have the yellow bag roll that you can buy, and, you know, you see those out occasionally.
Bill, you all said, and you have anything else?
Uh, just one thing, is I, is I run the numbers and I take out twenty-twenty, because I gotta say that's just an anomaly. If I look at the run rate from twenty nineteen, the first three months, and compare it with twenty twenty-one, the first three months, we're actually lower than we were in twenty nineteen on a run rate for three months.
Yeah, you're lower in January and February, and March you're a little bit higher, but you're right. It was starting to see a swing, so.
The other thing, I don't know if it's been brought up, because I was detained. The first five-year contract I saw, we had a three percent increase year over year. And now we're looking at seven percent year over year. Wow, what the heck happened here?
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you. When we went to this contract, I was saying earlier that we had to react in a very short period of time. We kind of underestimated and underestimated the amount of hours it would take us to perform the work and complete the, the town in a week. We estimated it would take about forty-three and a half hours a week to do the work, and we're averaging sixty-six hours a week. So that's, that's part of it, right? So the contract for the last four years, almost five years, has been underperforming. There's been years that we actually made, we lost money on the contract. So we, we need to get it more in line where it's, it's making money. We're not trying to build it all up at once. It's a gradual buildup, but we, we missed, uh, miscalculated the amount of hours, because, you know, again, we came into this and had a two-week turnaround time from the time the bid went out to the start date, so. You know, we rushed through it and we miscalculated. We don't go to our towns and knock on the door and say, we miscalculated, we need more money. We wait till the end and we bite the bullet, and then we try to work with you guys, you know, try to get back up the line.
Now, do you guys have any wiggle room with that seven percent, or can it be, have you thought about an escalating contract, where it's three percent year one, four percent year two, five percent, you know, something like that, where it's a gradual increase?
I can certainly go back. I mean, that's, I have to go to my pricing team and present that, but if you guys want to present something, come back to me, I will certainly go to bat for you.
All right, that's all the questions I have right now, Mike.
Yeah, I think, um, and I did look at those numbers, and I think, and I get where you're coming from, Roy, and you're trying to basically guess the best you can, what this is gonna look like, uh, with people, you know, whatever they're gonna throw up for trash, or what they're gonna throw up for recycling, and how many hours this is gonna take to do this job. Um, and I can appreciate that it was underdone as far as hours based what the actual numbers are. Uh, but yeah, I would think that maybe going from a four to a five to a six or a seven, or something like that, and the seven for the five-year contract would be more appropriate than just saying it's seventy, seven percent every year over year.
Okay.
Trying to make up for that under, underperforming year or two that was on the last contract at that.
Okay, well, I just noted, and I will, uh, so what do you, so what do you want me to go to my team with?
Well, it, it's a big jump to go from three to seven and then year over year. So I don't know, Bill, I would, I would suggest something like four, five, six, seven, seven, something like that.
Yeah, the one that's probably the most firm would be the year one price, I mean, because we do gotta get it, we're, right now, it's just, it's underwater, right? So we gotta get that one up, and then after that is, if you want me to go with.
So would you say de-escalating if you start at seven and then work your way down over the years?
That's what I was just gonna suggest.
Yeah, I like that idea too.
Look at me.
But, but again, the question is too, what, what have we actually been paying the past three years for comparison's sake? You know, we need to, we need to present that properly, because it, the increase might not look as big a jump when you look at what we actually have been truing up to.
Yeah, I know. I'll pull the, the last two years for you and show you with.
Yeah, yeah, we don't expect you to have this at the tip of your tongue, and we know we're asking off, off-the-cuff questions, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, if you can take everything that we're trying to throw at you and then maybe mull it into some kind of response, and then you go, so that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
So Bill, you said you're okay for now?
Yeah.
Okay, Ed, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
Ed?
Uh, yes, it just seems kind of troubling that sixty percent of the users are using four barrels. Did, Roy, do you know, are they putting out four full barrels?
I don't know that, how much is in each one. I just, I said, can you kind of give me a good estimate? And they went out in that week and drove around and said it's about sixty percent, then it was thirty percent had three, then he said the remainder, it made up the rest, right? So the ones and the twos. There are people who put out one. So more.
And, and, uh, how about, and that would include the bags? That would include bags? I see people just put, and I put out a bag rather than a barrel.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they don't have a barrel, then they, it's usually two bags make up a barrel.
Yeah, it's easy. You don't have to go back to the curb and grab the barrel.
Right, oh, yeah, that's faster for us, so.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Right, so if I'm looking at twenty twenty, and we know that that is all skewing everybody's numbers from a business perspective, again, because more people are home, more people are doing cooking at home and doing projects at home, and all of that extra waste is going into the trash. I would expect that as we level off and get closer to normal towards the end of twenty-one, that those numbers would look more like twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen, rather than the anomaly of twenty twenty.
The volumes.
Yeah, the volumes, because you know, sixty percent of the population in Groveland is putting out four barrels, which, I mean, that's a lot of trash, compared to my house that has six people, and I'm only putting out two. I don't know what they're doing. That's a lot of trash, you know, what are they doing?
It's, sometimes people just don't recycle much, because it's easier to throw out one barrel when you allow them to put out four, right? So.
Or they're lazy, one of the other.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so, Deb, I know you've had some questions you wanted to run by Rory. I think you're unmute.
I'm muted.
Okay, unmuting, um, because I had, I have not seen the contract, so I'm just going off of the, I printed out the paperwork that was sent with the email. So I also was actually surprised about the sixty percent of homes with all those barrels.
Yeah.
I think going down to two barrel would be good. Concerned a little bit about the pricing on things. I guess the biggest thing that I heard from our administrator of the, of, you know, the Board of Health is that she doesn't get the email responses or responses from people when there's a complaint. Or she can only get an email response. She doesn't have the telephone number of the person who, who is her contact, her contact person. So that would just something we need to work on too.
Yeah, yeah, we generate a report for every town. I mean, I asked before this call, and it's not, there hasn't been one sent there in a while. You always, I don't, I don't know if Denise used to get them or not, but we have a report that shows the missed pickups, complaint calls. You know, all that information's on there. Your tonnage information is on there every, so I can get you guys turned on if you want to give me a list, if you want the board to receive them, or if you just want somebody at the town hall to receive them, but you can get that every month, and it's one, one report, and it gives you everything broken down.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be Lori, who's our administrative coordinator in the, in the Board of Health.
Oh, Lori Benson?
Yeah.
Okay, then, no, Lori.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, anything else, Deb?
I'll have her.
No, no, I don't think so. I was just actually surprised too that Nichols Village and Whitestone Village are not part of, um, the contract.
Yeah, I'm assuming.
Who would do theirs?
Well, they must do their own.
I'm not surprised they're not part of the contract. They shouldn't be part of the contract. They should have their own independent contract.
Right, but do they plow their own streets as well?
I believe they do.
Yeah, so I think they're self-contained unit where they do their own stuff.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Well, yes, but then it gets into, you know, we have a federal housing project behind the hall and we have the electric department that's separate. That we are doing trash work on the taxpayer. So I think we need to kind of look at what's in the contract and decide. How how many dumpsters we need to put out there.
Look, somebody.
Yeah, you're you're host now, so you have to mute.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so do you know how long it might take for you to get with your internal team and then. Uh, come back with us to a new proposal, I think. Um, well, that's who we missed. I missed Jason. Um. And a revised number from that, was it six thirty four? Was that the proposed, at least initial to propose amount?
Yeah, yeah. Let me see. I I, so are you looking, because I heard two different things. I heard a escalating and a de-escalation. I know which way you guys want to start with it and.
Well, you had said that the first year would have to be at the higher side to recoup the alignment from the previous contract.
Right, so let's let's talk about year one into year two. Do you want that to be the smaller of the escalator? You want, or do you want it to start higher and then work its way down? Or you want to start low and work your way up?
Well, I think from your perspective, you wanted it to be higher so you could re- recoup the loss of hours that was, I guess, miscalculated. Right. From the previous contract from, was it forty three to sixty six or something that which forty three was what you bid and sixty six was actual.
Right.
Right, so I think from your perspective, you want it to be higher. I think from our perspective. Whether it's a de-escalation or an escalation, I don't know that it matters all that much. I'll let the other people join in. But as long as it's not the, the flat seven percent year over year over year. I think we're gonna see some cost savings at that juncture, along with moving from four barrels to two barrels, along with. Reduction in the number of dumpsters around the town. Um, I think those three or four items will show a significant. Um, decrease in the contract value that you're presenting and then we can make a decision based on that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I would say I could probably. Couple days.
Yeah, I I mean, our contract is what, up in June or something?
June thirtieth, right.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we have time to, um, you know, nail this down and get get it right and. Make sure that you're comfortable with it and your team's comfortable with it and we're comfortable with it. You know, I think you're probably running into this. Pretty regularly with other towns. It's been a hard year for municipalities to um, adjust to the covid situation and adjust to. A reduction in funds and allocation towards other things that we weren't anticipating having spending on. So anywhere that we can save some money for the townspeople and buffer whatever sense of um, surplus we might have. Coming in, then it would be better for us.
Okay. Alright, let me see what I can do, uh, because I'll try to, I'm gonna ease the burden and, you know. The first couple of years, I mean, because it doesn't matter to me which way we go as long as we arrive at the the same endpoint at the end, right? So.
Right.
I just, if it's easy for you to sit there and go, we don't know, you know, we we need time to. You know, for revenues, we if we can have a lower increase next year and then build a way up, or do you want to just get it over with and and have it go the other way? You tell me and I'll design it that way.
I'll ask the board, but from my perspective, easing into it, especially coming off of this year, would probably be better, but Bill, what do you think?
Geez, uh. I'm thinking about it both ways, only because if I take a hit, I I I'm thinking I'd rather take it now. Because I know the school's coming online in the next couple of years, so a decreasing. Trash collection contract would offset an increasing school budget. So hopefully net net, we come close to break even. Um, but I don't know, you know, either way, it's a help, so. I would understand, you know, I could do it the other way too. It'd give us a big break in in the initial years as as we ramp up and then. Give also gives us time to gather our thoughts and get some ideas on the table on how we, you know. Meet this need going forward.
Alright, Ed, what do you think?
I I'm not sure that it matters. Either way, uh, whatever, whatever everybody thinks.
Alright, so you don't have an opinion either way?
No, I don't have an opinion on it. I think it'll, I think it'd work either way.
Alright. Jason? Jason?
I think ramping up to it would be preferred for me anyways, just because it has been such a strenuous year this year. With the, with the budget and everything, so starting off slow and going into it. And then the only other thing I'd like to to bring up and ask of Kevin is to check, like, the water department, light department. Uh, VC Park, even though they're in the trash contract, they may be paying for it to the town. Like the water department does with the insurance and other things. So I might provide a better rate, I don't know.
I don't recall seeing those separate items for those departments paying anything into the trash. You know, with the enterprise funds from the water and the electric and where VC is supposed to be self-sustaining. We're paying a lot of stuff to go into VC for not being self-sustaining.
Right, but Mike, remember, some of this might be what they call shared costs, you know, what Denise was trying to. Allocate the the square footage and the electric usage and the payroll costs and things like that and share it. Or allocate it equally across the departments based on their usage, so. Like to 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 uh, Jason's point, it might already be in the calculations.
Light pays its own trash removal costs. Water sewer, there, it's negligible. There really isn't anything except. Trash can at the treatment plant, but that would generate next to nothing. They probably get their own bill. I honestly don't know, but it certainly would be a negligible cost of the town. And VC, um, they pay all their own expenses um, out of their budget, so whatever it is up there, they're paying it. And actually, if you look in your warrant, you'll see a rundown of all those costs. I think you'll see trash removal right in there. If you don't, let me know and I'll check. Um, but ninety nine percent sure they're paying it.
Yeah. Kathy, what do you think?
Um, well, I think that we should, I see the change in the collection cost. It's like a hundred thousand dollars, like. From this year to next, to the next year. It's kind of a tough jump. And then a dollar per ton addition as well, so I'd rather. I know I need, I know he needs to make an adjustment. I understand what he's saying. I remember when the other people pulled out. And they came in and took care of the town, so um, I'd like to be fair about it, but. If he could kind of make it in two steps, if that jump could be made in two steps, that'd be easier for us to fit into the budget. And I think as far as, you know, the number of dumpsters and things around town that um. I I feel like that's just a ha- a leftover from years gone by where we stuck dumpsters all over the place, just so people wouldn't throw trash out around, but. Now it's probably costing us some fair money and um, we should look into it and take care of it as part of this contract. We should have a conversation.
Yeah, I, like I said.
We are paying for these dumpsters. We know that and we're we're picking up the cost, so. So we need to just figure out, you know, how we want to do it on our end. It's not really your problem. It's kind of our problem, you know? So that may be something we work on this year and next year and we'll let you know. It's, that's not a you problem, that's us, I think. Yeah.
I'll I'll send you a little list of the 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 uh, containers that we're collecting under this contract and you get, and you can have a discussion and say who do you want me to. Continue with or who, how you want me to think about it, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That'd be great. But I like the idea of maybe stepping up, you know, and if we can do it and. You, it seems to me you want to make one kind of significant adjustment if I'm understanding you right. If you.
I I gotta make the biggest adjustment in year one, just because we're, right now, I mean, it's like I'm writing you a check to pick up your your trash, right?
Okay, so a hundred thousand dollar jump, that has to happen. That's what you're saying.
Well, it doesn't, I can, I can bring that down, but I'll have, if I bring it down ten thousand, I have to make it up in some of the other years, right? So.
Well, yes, I get that.
Tell me how you want to slice the pie, I can.
Well, that's what I thought, like with the way our budget cycles work, if you, you know, we've had trash jump up, so I've seen it before. Um, if we could maybe do a sixty percent jump this year and the other piece next year. And not had, so that the big, so that we're not having a big increase every single year. You know, like make the two steps to make up what you're trying to make up and then is it possible to not have seven percent increases in the last? Three years of it? Is that possible?
I I guess I'm not.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, right.
You want, you want a de-escalating contract, then that out of seven percent work its way down to three.
Yeah, I I think that, yeah, well, except maybe that seven percent's a little bit high. Maybe bring that jump down a tiny bit. You know, just to make, help us fit this in this year. That's all.
So you're talking about the the rate for July first?
Yes, that's a bitty, that's a pretty big jump, right?
I I can, I can try to minimize that, but like I said, whatever I take off of that, I'll have to spread out over the other year, so.
Well, yeah, if we could see what that looks like, that that would be helpful. We may decide that we'd rather get it over with, but.
I'm not gonna do seventeen fucking different quotes, honey. Come on.
What?
What?
Uh.
What was that? Uh, I think it was talking to somebody else. Um, that hundred thousand dollars, that's a one-time increase? Do I have that right?
Well, it it's the the jump from your current year to the this next fiscal year. So you'll see, then there's other increases. I don't know if you guys have seen the proposal, then it goes up, you know, each year after that, so.
Yeah, I don't have the proposal in front of me. What are those numbers?
Uh, let's see, let's see if I have a copy of that here.
The numbers in the proposal are a uh, seven percent increase from last year and then each year. Over the next five increases seven percent equally.
Right, but what is the, this first year is a hundred thousand dollar increase. What is the increase for year two on the contract?
Oh, uh, two seconds, I've got all that calculated. Uh, let's see.
Yes, it it goes up uh, on the collection side now. About thirty thousand. The next year goes up about twenty, maybe thirty again, and then the next year goes up about. Was it twenty three and thirty four, thirty four?
It goes up twenty nine, two twenty five in the first year, thirty one, two twenty, two seventy. Thirty three, four fifty nine, and then the final year, thirty five, eight oh two.
So I'm gonna make sure I have these numbers right. It's a hundred, thirty, thirty one, thirty four, thirty six?
Yeah, we go from four seventeen, uh. Yeah, the.
I got it right here. The first year is four hundred and seventeen thousand, four ninety five.
Yeah.
Right.
The next year is.
Second year, Ed.
The next year is.
Hold on, Bill. What was that? Hold on, hold on, Bill.
Four forty six, seven twenty.
Okay.
The next year is four seventy seven, nine ninety. Then the next year is five eleven, four four nine. And the final year is five four seven, two five one. So the biggest jump is year one and then after that, they can, they're up like thirty grand.
Does that jive with you, Bill?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Seven percent, it's uh, like you said. Goes to four seventeen, four ninety five, then it jumps another twenty nine, two twenty five. Then twen- thirty one, two seventy, then thirty three, four fifty nine, then thirty five, eight oh two. Yep. And the, it's the same with the uh, you know, the uh, eighty two per ton had jumped seven percent each year as well, so. You know, it's five seventy eight, then six eighteen, six sixty one to seven oh two. You can't tell I got nothing to do all day but run numbers.
But that's not at a de-escalating rate that we talked about.
No, that's just what.
No.
Was prior to this, right?
Alright.
So I've run numbers for five percent increases and three percent increases if you guys are interested. Because I had nothing better to do.
Yeah, I want to hear the five percent and the three percent.
So five percent, uh, so start at the four seventeen, four ninety five. If we went five percent, the next year would be four thirty eight, three seventy. Following year would be four sixty, two eighty eight. Following year would be four eight three, three oh three. And the final year would be five zero seven, four sixty eight.
Okay, three percent?
First year being the same, second year would be four thirty, zero two zero. Four four two nine two zero. Four five six two zero eight. And four six nine, eight nine four.
Well, there seems to be some cost savings on those.
Yeah, there would be, that's, yeah.
Well, I guess, my question is on the, you're saying that we have to jump up that collection cost significantly to make up for. That, the amount of hours that you underestimated when you first started this contract. I could get that part. But if we're going from four to two barrels, I would think that yes, you need to make up some hours, but it wouldn't be. As many hours as if we were allowing people to put out four barrels, because I, from what I've heard, the trucks sometimes get full. Too soon and and you know, you have to go.
Jump out.
Right, yeah, and get unload, right?
But as I mentioned before, though, that that trash is not gonna go away. They're either gonna buy bags. Or they're gonna have more recycling, so we're gonna be picking up more recycling or picking up bags.
Yeah.
If someone puts out forty pounds of trash a week now, it's not gonna go away. They're just either gonna have to buy a bag to pay for the extra or they're gonna try to recycle more, but I'm still gonna spend as much time in front of you.
Much time as you, I get.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, it's gonna be in a, in a bag or it's gonna be on the other side of the truck as recycling.
Okay, so you're thinking the collections, so where do we see the savings though from going down to two barrels? Where do we see it?
On the, on your tons, on your disposal.
On the tonnage.
Okay, and I guess my follow-up would be, is there any chance that by forcing them into more recycling? Is that, could that cause us more costs than four barrels or?
It would cost you more if the recycling market crashed like, like it did a couple of years ago, but. Well, as you've seen right now, I mean, it was at ninety dollars a ton or eight, in high eighties back end of twen- no, twenty twenty. And now you got, now it's only forty six, so it's going the other way. The rec- recycling market's starting to improve dramatically, so.
Okay, okay.
If you improve that, you're gonna, you know, you'd save about thirty dollars, thirty five dollars a ton for every, they they recycle site.
Okay, good.
And that's where the other savings would come into.
Right.
Right, so it might be of the offset, that seven percent first year increase to allow him to make back his, a little bit of his margin that he's lost over the last five years. With the two barrel limit, it might offset it enough where, you know, the pain isn't that bad.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Escalating contract might help, be helpful in the long run to us.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to do is find out what's the best way to mitigate the pain from the last year, from going forward into other years.
Yeah, so I guess I wanna, is the year one, what's the bigger problem? Is it the year one price starting in July that you didn't budget for or is it? Years two, three, four and five from now?
I would say from my perspective, it's year one, but I'm only one, one guy.
Okay, because what I can do is, I mean, I can go back and say, what's. Trying to tone down year one, even though we need to gather it, but we can make it up as we go out, because you guys didn't have it in the budget this year and then maybe next year. Knowing what it's gonna be, you could start budgeting for it, so. So we just say I took that four seventeen down, or what, I just sort of round it up as a three eighty or whatever. Then, then the next year, instead of going up thirty, I go up thirty five, the next year I go up, you know, thirty eight and build that back up till we, you know, we get to that point, so.
I think that that's a better approach coming out of the the year, but I mean. I guess everybody would have to weigh in on what they think is a better approach based on. The budget that we just went through, the arguments that we just went through and where we're standing in the bottom line for the budget at this point.
So I just, yeah, I I I'm willing to go back and try to just redesign this, I just want to know what, what you guys want to see.
Yeah. Kathy, what do you think?
Well, I think what you just said, if he brings it down to like, instead of a hundred thousand dollar increase, it's more down like, what, seventy thousand dollars or sixty?
Yeah.
That, that's easier for us to put into the budget at this late date, so that gives us a little bit of a handle and then. We'll get to see going to two barrels. Hopefully we'll recoup some costs during this year, so by next year, we'll understand things better.
Yeah, and plus I think you're gonna see that, that, you know, as you can see in January, February, March, your tons are starting to come back down to normalcy too, right? So that's gonna help your budget.
Okay, good.
Right? Uh, recycling is, it's at an all-time high. It's been in the last two and a half, three years as well, so. What you were spending last year for recycling is got, is almost half of that right now on the, on the processing side, so.
Okay, good. No, that's, I think that sounds very reasonable. I think that kind of proposal would be. Okay, good. No, that's, I think that sounds very reasonable. I think that kind of proposal would be good.
Okay, I'll go back and I'll try to ease year one and then I'll make some adjustments. Do you want those adjustments to be escalated or de-escalated after that? I want to, I want to, I want to, I'm trying to design this for the way you guys want to see it. I have to get to the, the final endpoint's got to be the same, but how I get there, you guys can, I want to work with you.
I, I'm in favor of a gradual increase coming out of this.
Okay, it's going to be a little more, and the more I take it down to year one, it's going to be a little more aggressive in the other years, but like, I know what you're saying. The, the first year will be less, the second year will be a little bit more, the third, I can do it that way, but they are going to be is more, the more I take off the year one, it's going to obviously carry over the other years, but.
Right, I, I get the numbers. It's more of where we are financially with the anticipation that things will go back to normal by the time we're in year three, four.
I, I totally agree with you.
You know, so let's, why don't we find out what the consensus is if we want to do escalating or de-escalating and then we'll give.
So everybody's in agreement, they want to see some type of relief in year one, though.
Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, yes, I'll go along with that. Some relief in year one.
Okay.
Jason?
Yeah, I definitely think there would be needed the, the relief in year one. And hopefully with the introduction of the overflow bags, we could help absorb some of the additional costs as the years progress.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, so I think what we're talking about is a little bit of an adjustment near one and then we're talking escalating. That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Bill, you on board with that? Bill, you muted? Bill's having five conversations. Bill is at the park? I think he was yelling at some of his players.
Was he a coach?
Yeah, he coaches baseball. Oh, there he comes. Bill? Bill? All right, I'm going to say he's okay with it. We got four of us anyways.
Just one follow-up question to Roy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Roy, on those dumpsters that we have in several.
You cut out.
locations, are we paying a fixed cost for them or are we paying based upon what's, what each one has in it, the trash?
No, you, it's a fixed cost and it's built into your collection contract, so the collection price is not only just for the collecting of all the homes in town, but it's also includes those containers, so it's, it's a fixed price that we, you know, we calculated, what is the cost to collect those containers, built it into the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, it doesn't change if the container's a half-full or overfull or whatever, so it's fixed cost.
Would it be the
Good.
Same if they were picked up every two weeks instead of every week?
It, it would come down a little bit. I'm telling you right now, the, the impact of those containers is not, is not going to rock your world. It's expensive. It's, it's more costly for me to have a guy get out of his truck, you know, five hundred times a day and collect barrels and bags than it is to have a truck pick up, pick it up in two minutes, you know what I mean? And so.
It makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So I just want to progress check, Mike. So Roy, you're going to redo the proposal so everybody can throw the, the one away that they've got now. You're going to completely rewrite it and send that out. And you're going to do the estimates for the FY twenty-two budget that you and I worked up. You're going to redo those.
Yeah, I'm going to do the FY twenty and FI twenty-one actual costs, yeah.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about the FY twenty-two, July one-twenty-one to June thirty-twenty-two budget numbers that you and I did.
Yep.
You're going to redo those too. And then Mike, when do you want, you want this back on the agenda for next Monday night if possible for vote?
Yeah, I think so. I think that, you know, we'd like to make a decision, if not Monday night, then shortly after that. I mean, we want to get this in place before the contract ends.
Roy, you can, you can accommodate that?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if I could have it by Monday, nice meeting, but I could probably have it by, no later than midnight next week. But I, I have, I have to meet with and not everybody's always reachable now, so. If I have, today's what, Tuesday? I, I might have it by Friday or Monday.
Yeah, don't, don't kill yourself over it. I mean, it's fine, I'd rather have it accurate and, and you comfortable on your side and then when you present it to us that we have the correct numbers and, you know, there's not going to be some surprise six months from now and be like, oh no, we, we messed up on this trying to rush through it. So I'd rather you take back what the input was from the board, come up with something that you're comfortable with, agreeing to, and then presenting to us, you know, whether it's Monday or the following meeting or if we have to have another special gathering like this, we could always do that too.
Yeah, so I'll do, just to kind of go over it again, so I'm going to lower, try to attempt to lower year one as much as I can. And then I'm going to do escalating costs for year two, three, four, and five.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then the, the four-barrel to two-barrel.
What about that?
Well, that's, your, your quote is on four barrels still, right? We want to, we want to have that done to two barrels?
Yeah, and it's not going to change your collection cost, like I said.
Right.
The driver's still going to spend as much time in front of each home. What you'll see the saving is on your disposal bill.
Right, okay.
I will send you a list of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, which you actually spent, Kathleen requested. I will get you a list of all the containers that are in the contract. Decision if you want to let everybody, and I'm telling you, it's going to be incremental on the overall cost, whether you want to continue or you want to build them internally for what each one. And I could tell you what we're, what we figured for costing each one. That way, if you want to internally build another department, that's up to you.
Okay.
And then I'll get Kevin the fiscal year twenty-two forecast.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Catherine got kicked off.
No, I'm good. No, I'm good. So load, and swing, load. Load.
All right, Bill, you're at the baseball practice.
Sorry, sorry, bye-bye.
All right, bye. All right, so we're going to get a motion to adjourn this meeting anyways at six. Can someone make that?
Motion to adjourn at six o'clock.
On the button.
Second.
All right, we'll call myself, yes, Ed?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason? Yes. And Bill?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Roy. We'll look forward to your information.
Guys, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, bye-bye.
Thanks, have a great night.